Okay. I'll call a meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor. Coquitlam and I will be chairing tonight's public hearing. I'll open with a couple of comments. Of course, we just celebrated Robbie Byrne's Day on the weekend, so congratulations to all the Scots in the room, including May.
(inaudible).
Okay, May, who's not sure of her cultural heritage.[31.11][31.11](Laughter). And I believe councillor Towner, her maiden name is McIntosh? McIntosh? McIntyre, all of you. Okay, so it's a public hearing into the bylaws that we'll be hearing tonight. They'll be read to you, read to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will first present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and then the floor will be open to anyone in attendance who wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Of course, any people in the audience who are Scottish will go first, and then, oh, sorry, those that have pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak. And then we'll open the floor to everyone else. I stressed to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input, but there's some rules that council has asked me to enforce. We haven't prejudged these bylaws, but this is not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either staff or council or with someone in the audience who may disagree with your point of view. So we ask that you all restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw that's on the floor at that moment, be as brief and concise as possible. We ask speakers to respect a five-minute time limit. There's a little clock on the red, yellow, and green lights, a five-minute time limit so that everyone can get a chance to speak. If you've got more good stuff than you can fit into five minutes, and it's, then you get to the back of the line and we'll hear you again. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her points without interruption, without clapping if it's really good, without booing, without cheering, without any interruptions at all. We find that that level ensures the greatest respect. We know that the microphone is a daunting place for many people, so we want to respect that as much as possible. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. If any of you have a written, have something written that you want to be part of the permanent record of tonight's public hearing, you have to hand it into the council table right here prior to the adjournment of that item on the agenda. After we adjourn an item, we are legally banned from receiving more information as a council until the matter is actually dealt with and completed. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council may give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda, as well as a number of other items on the council agenda. However, if during the public hearing council requests further information related to an item, then we'll defer that consideration of that item until that further information comes before us. I'll now call on Ms. Lord to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda, and the planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one is an application to amend the citywide official community plan and city zoning bylaw to revise the land use designation zoning of the 3,500 block Sheffield Avenue, bylaw numbers 4537 and 4538.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This site is located in northeast Coquitlam, east of the current terminus of Sheffield Avenue, and the site is bordered on the west by Burke Mountain Creek. The site is predominantly designated compact, low-density residential, environmentally sensitive area along the western edge, and elementary school potential under the city's official community plan. The zoning on the site, and to the north, east, and south, is A3 agriculture and resource. Zoning to the west reflects the OCP plan designations for that area, which is a mixture of RS9, RS8, and RS7, single-family, and RT2 townhouse, as well as P5 special park along the Burke Mountain streamside protection enhancement area. The applicant is requesting an OCP map amendment to redesignate the site from elementary school potential, as shown here under the E on the current OCP land use map, to school and to rezone the site to RS8, large village, single-family residential, RS9 residential in concurrence with the OCP designation of compact, low-density, P5 special park in concurrence with the environmentally sensitive area designation, and P1 civic institutional in concurrence with the school designation. This site is the first development site within the Partington Creek neighborhood plan area. Under this plan, a different approach for designating school sites is being applied than under the previous northeast neighborhood plans. This approach identified in Partington Creek neighborhood plan policy is to identify potential areas for schools on the land use plan, and then subsequently, through consultation with the school district, determine the precise location for a specific school. This OCP bylaw amendment is the first application of this new approach, where a specific school site has been identified and is now being proposed to be redesignedated to school accordingly. The bylaw amendments will facilitate development of approximately 137 single-family lots, a future school site, a passive park containing a streamside protection area, and a nature trail. Staff are recommending second and third readings to OCP bylaw number 4537, and second and third readings to zoning amendment bylaw number 4538.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? I, I'll take that, that they want to speak. Okay, so just come forward to the microphone, and we'll ask you to pull the microphone toward your chin, and then say your name and address for the record.
Okay. Amy Wong, 1359 Beverly Place.
Perfect, thank you.
First time I've done this, I'm a little bit nervous. Mayor Stewart and council members, why I'm coming up to speak tonight is because the application that's been brought forward is asking for approval for 137 more single-family dwellings and approval of an elementary school site. My concern as a neighbor in that neighborhood is that we are already lacking schools there. It hasn't been built yet, and you're adding to the capacity of something that isn't there, which is the schools. My request tonight is for council to deliver on the community vision for schools in Burke Mountain as a priority and with leadership by the city. In addition, I wanted to share with you the impact it's having in the neighborhood. Me and my family are-
I just wanna, I sense the possibility that there's a few of you that have the same issue, and I just wanna speak perhaps a bit before we do that.
Okay.
Council doesn't get to build schools. We designate property based on what the school board says they want. We identify a number of sites in conjunction with the school board. We designate those sites. We even zone the sites sometimes, but ultimately, the school board has to, the school board and the Ministry of Education together, have to make the purchase of the sites, design schools, build the schools, and they do so typically upon demand. So we don't, we're not adding to the capacity of the schools, as you said. We're not, we're actually just putting in place, with the development, the development is putting in place the demand for the schools. We recognize that the school district has had challenges delivering the schools. We've partnered with them on an elementary school site already in the Smiling Creek area, and we're moving forward as quickly as we can with the schools, with the school board, on trying to encourage the construction as soon as possible of the schools. Unfortunately, the city council and the city doesn't have anything to do with the building of them. We only control the land use, and we know that that's where the school will be, and now we're dealing with the land around it. But go ahead.
I understand that, and I guess I just wanna come and voice and ask for the council and mayor's leadership in making sure this gets delivered. I understand you don't build it.
We can't make sure of anything. All we can do is, well, we can make sure that the land is designated for schools, and we've done that. And we're really pushing very hard. It's a new school board. We'll see where things go, and we've heard lots of cooperation from the new school board, but I'm, and I'm not trying to dissuade your comments. I'm just trying to set it in context of the fact that we're as frustrated as you are that the schools aren't built yet.
So I hope you can hear, as a resident living there, if you can just hear our concerns.
Yep.
So we're new to the community. When, a year ago, we just moved into Coquitlam, and just like every family, Coquitlam and the developers are selling too, Burke Mountain was the next best area to be in. And I did, made my inquiries, did my due diligence. I was told schools and community centers and parks would be built. My husband and I made the biggest investment of our lives and decided to raise our children in this community. However, in the last year, the vision has been not fulfilled. Externally to us, it appears the intent of building the necessities of a community, which is schools, parks, rec centers, have not been prioritized, and instead, promises appear to be broken and delayed. I cannot, I cannot pitch how great it is to come and buy in this community now. When I first bought here, I was excited. I was telling everyone who was even thinking about selling their home and buying somewhere else or raising their family somewhere, I'm like, "Come to Coquitlam, come to Burke Mountain. It's, it's a great place to raise your kids." But just like every other family, the question and the foundation is, "Where's the schools? How are the schools?" And my answer now is, "I don't know. They say it's gonna be built, but it's not built." I've heard, you know, there's a new development in the area of Maple Ridge, and because of the lack of schools there, parents have to line up the night before registration to register their kids. And if we don't prioritize the schools to get built in Burke Mountain, we're gonna face the same thing. And our children should not be, like, buying concert, like, tickets for a hot concert. Parents shouldn't have to be lining up the night before to register their kids in, in school. I'm not stating, councillor Mayor Stewart, that work hasn't been done, and thank you for all the hard work that council has been doing to date, but I'm just, I'm just requesting and asking, please prioritize, please communicate to the residents of Burke Mountain of the progress of what's happening, 'cause currently, we don't feel that communication is, is happening, and we don't know what's happening. Instead, that's what I say, it appears that it's just been delayed because there's a lack of communication. So how does council deliver? I know you can't, you know, you rezone it, but, you know, can you, can you come out as a leader and bring all the stakeholders to the table and say, "What is the reasons why you can't build it? Is it budget? Is it schedule? How can all the different stakeholders, including the schools, the developers, come to the table and say, 'What are our hurdles, and how can we overcome them?'" Do you ask developers to pitch into a fund for schools? Do you weigh DCCs? Do you prioritize the development schedule? Just ideas, like, ask the hard questions. What's the hurdles, and how can we overcome the hurdles? So again, tonight, I'm just here to ask council to please show your leadership and prioritize for the children of Burke Mountain, 'cause this is who it's impacting. It's the kids in Burke Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, and I will say, that the two, okay, of all the services that we provide, that are provided to the residents of a new community, sewer, water, pipes, electricity, telephone, fire department, we've got a new fire hall, community centers, parks, playground equipment, of all those, there's only two that the city has no control over whatsoever. Coincidentally, there are buses, we don't have any of those yet, up to as far as David and Coast, and schools. We don't get to do those. We have set it as a priority, though. In fact, the last time, several members of council here, we met with the Minister of Education back in the fall. We've met, we've phoned, and we've been talking to the deputy minister repeatedly. We have worked with the school board. Now the school board has a new superintendent and a new council, a new Board of Education. I know there's a couple of members of the Board of Education here tonight, undoubtedly to listen to the passion in your voice. We have done a tremendous amount to try to-
And thank you for that.
And I'm not trying, looking for credit, I'm just-
No.
I'm incredibly frustrated that the schools aren't in the ground already. For that matter, I wish the doors were open. We've got some real challenges with the three elementary school sites, and the middle and the high school sites. We're pushing through them. I, I promise you, we are, there are members of council here that focus a whole lot of attention on that, even though we can't control it, and we will continue to do that.
And can I formally ask that we've, that the city form a committee with residents, representatives of Burke Mountain, to, to inform us of all the work that you do and the progress? Because we're just left here, and we're waiting. And I, I think the lack, there's lack of communication, and that's where frustration builds up, right? When there is a lack of communication to your community, so-
Absolutely, and we have actually, I actually put that proposal forward. I suspect that council will entirely support it. We need to communicate as well as we possibly can. We, we believe we've communicated a lot, and I've talked to an awful lot of parents, but we'll continue to do that, and I suspect that there's at least two reporters right behind you that are gonna have a big story that includes the realities of the school situation on Burke Mountain. I've got two members of coun, three members of council now that undoubtedly have questions or comments to you. Councillor Hodge, who lives up in your neighborhood.
Well, thank you. I'll just sort of, first, actually, I do have a question for you, maybe if you could just take, 'cause I do have a question for you. First of all, let me say that I have lived up on Burke Mountain myself for, for close to 20 years, and my kids, I thought were going to go to an elementary school, and today, they're in high school in Port Coquitlam. So I completely understand where you're coming from, and we're residents, because I heard the same promises when I thought my kids were going to attend the school. There have been challenges along the way. The communication, I agree, is key. I had a chance to meet with most of the school trustees at an event this week, one-on-one, and I've suggested to them that they hold a town hall meeting up in Burke Mountain so that you can hear firsthand some of the information you're getting from us, but you deserve to hear it from the school trustees and from the school administrators. We have made that suggestion. I know there's some work being done behind the scenes. I hope that will happen, because I think the residents up there do deserve to hear some answers, not only in the future, but also what's gonna happen this year at Lee's School. So I've made that suggestion. I know that council has been very involved over the years, trying to get things moving ahead, and that's, I'll just say, that's to your, to your question on the communication piece, I absolutely agree. To the mayor's point, we are doing what we can up there. A $10 million fire hall is opening next month, fully staffed. The parks are coming, so we're, we're putting that development in. Some of this development that you see up there is paid for by developers, so while they can't fund schools, that's not legislatively possible, they do contribute to parkland, and in this proposal is a contribution to parkland. And in fact, the best news of all may be the fact that there could actually be a school site in here, which is one of the things that we've had problems with over the years. So this one actually does include that designation if this goes through. My question to you, though, is, because this is a public hearing about land use, and as a resident up on Burke Mountain, and we understand all the concerns about the schools, but do you have concerns about the fact that there's going to be designated 137 lots up on this mountain? Is that a concern?
Yes, because that's 137 more families and kids needing schools, and there's no schools up there.
Right.
And that's why I'm, I'm here.
Okay, so from that standpoint, you're just saying, "Don't approve anything not here." That would be your position on, on development in general?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to get where you were coming from on this particular, 'cause tonight, it's about the use of this land-
Yes, sir, I wasn't clear when I first-
No, no, that's, okay, but I get the rest of the discussion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. Councillor Hodge and I actually served on the city school board liaison committee for past several years. I was the chair, councillor Hodge was the vice chair, and we talked quite a bit about this issue. And I wanted to know if, just to, in terms of communication, I think the clearest communication that's come about this came a little more than two years ago from the school board, when they did publish a timeline for when the various schools would be built on Burke Mountain. And that was December of 2012, and it was a story in one of the, maybe one or both of the newspapers at the time. And it then announced that the Smiling Creek Elementary School would be built, probably open by 2016. I believe that's a year out of date now. I think it's gonna be 2017. That was the big land assembly that the city actually helped with, the school board last, just last fall, assembling that land. It's a joint-use site, it's gonna be a city park and a school board land for the building. The next thing that the school board announced was that there would be a Partington Creek Elementary School by 2021, at the earliest. And I believe that this, the school zoning that we're looking at right now is that particular one. That's the Partington Creek Elementary School 2021. That is the school district's timetable. They then said the Burke Mountain Secondary would open 2023, and then a year or two later, another elementary school in the eastern part of Partington Creek, around the Marigold Elementary area, was there, was the school board's announcement. And finally, a middle school aimed for 2026. So if you were just to Google Burke Mountain School District sites, something like that, you'll, you'll find all that, that story done, that was a Tri-City News story that I pulled up here. So that's the timetable that the school board has announced, and, and we're very pleased they announced that. Things aren't totally firmed up about that yet. Obviously, even the very first one, 2016, for the Smiling Creek Elementary, that's already behind schedule. And it's not just the school board's issue, it's also a provincial government policy issue. They don't wanna advance money or give bridge financing until the people are already all there, and so they don't build schools on projections. So it'll be, anyway, that's just something to keep in mind. So I wanted to share that information with you and for anybody else in the audience that's interested in that. And that's something that, if the school board does have a public meeting up there, I think they'll be able to reiterate and to give more details on. Thank you.
And I've been asked to, and suggest perhaps Mr. Stenishia can offer some comments about the state of where we're at now. He was involved directly in the negotiation with the school board to try to, as you've said, push, to make it a priority to actually have the city facilitate the assembly of land for Smiling Creek Elementary, and that was successful last fall. Mr. Stenishia.
Thank you, Your Worship. Councillor O'Neill covered off a lot of territory there, and that's exactly what's happened with the school district. Last November, the city actually did endorse the school district's plan, their eligible school site, DCC proposal, that included a whole bunch of school sites, which included the Smiling Creek Elementary School Site, and included this school site as well. In addition, the city has been assisting them pretty much for the whole 2014 year in assembling the Smiling Creek Elementary School Site in accordance with the official community plan. We did reach a milestone last year where we will, we were able to achieve contracts of purchase and sale with all of the property owners in the Smiling Creek area on Queenston and Princeton to purchase the land required for the joint elementary school parklands. And right now, all of those properties are under contract. We're working through some due diligence issues between the school district and the city with respect to those lands, and there should be, if all goes well, an announcement coming soon in the spring that subjects will be removed, if all goes well, and we'll be able to close on those properties to move forward. One of the most important elements of developing school sites is the acquisition of land. And it was a challenge to acquire seven, to work with seven different property owners. Here, there's one property owner, and it was a bit simpler because of that. So anyways, we're very hopeful on the Smiling Creek School Site, that we will have an announcement, hopefully in the spring of this year.
Councillor O'Neill?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Hodge.
A question for, for staff. That, that's great news on the, the Smiling Creek Site, which would be the first elementary school site. I know that there's, there is a site at the corner of Coast Maritine and David, that's the secondary school site. I believe the school district has that piece of property. This one, the first, the one that you just spoke of would be the first elementary school site. There are no other sites up on Burke Mountain that are, there's some that are sort of planned, and they're sort of like this one was, there still is until this passes. But this would be only the third property that would actually become, if this passes, would actually be only the third site that would actually have designation on it in terms of zoning. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. There are a whole bunch of school sites on Burke Mountain. Actually, there are more school sites designated that will actually be required, and the reason for that is the school wanted some flexibility on where the schools were to be located, and, and this was one of them, with the little E in Partington Creek.
If I could provide a clarifying comment, so-
Mr. Stebb.
There's only three that the school board have purchased. This is the third one that they've actually got the land for. There is a whole separate process that we are going with to try to solidify the exact locations of the other sites. There's lots of designations. The designations don't mean as much as they could if you don't own the land, because somebody else owns it and whatever. So this is the, this is, this report is critical, because it actually puts into school district ownership the land for the third school. As you have indicated, the school board already owns the land, or will very shortly be finalizing the land. On the other elementary site, they've already got the secondary site. So that means they own the land for three sites. We're working very, they're very diligently with them to solidify the other sites in the very near future. As the mayor indicated, we do have a new school board, we do have a new school superintendent. I, myself, have had a number of meetings with the school staff in the last month to try to move this forward as fast as possible, and I have every confidence that we are gonna make significant strides in the next few months in that regard. But the school board leads this issue, not council.
But if we were to turn this down tonight, that would leave the school board with only two sites, not three. Is that correct?
That is correct. This would be, that would be a retrograde step, because not only would it take away a site from the school district, it would send a message to the province, who has to fund the construction of the schools, that there isn't as much of a priority to give Coquitlam the money that we need to build the schools, because, hey, development has stopped. As soon as you stop development, you're not as high on the priority list. So even though, I certainly understand the reasons why people are upset, the strategy would backfire, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna do one other thing. It's a little bit unusual, in that there are three members of the school board in the audience tonight, and this isn't picking on them. We have school trustees Carol Cahoon, Elisa Park, and Chuck Dennison. They could stand up if they want, they don't have to. There you go. Now, they're new here, okay? Don't blame them for how slow it's been. They're, they're brand new, but I think, I applaud them for being here tonight, 'cause clearly they wanna hear from you as well about, about these kinds of issues, and to, to know how much the community, I know they, I'm pretty sure they know how much the community views this as a priority, to get these schools built, which is something we can't do, but this, and the school board can't do by itself, it can do it with the province, and we're trying to grease those wheels. Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? You can get up on the first time if you like. There we go, they're all jockeying for position.
Good evening.
Good day, sir.
Oh, there's a timer there. My name is Jim McNeil. I live at 3729 Cory Road in northeast, northeast Coquitlam. I'm here basically just to ask a question. Is there any commitment in discussion or that can be disclosed with, as to funding for the construction by way of the capital commitments from the Ministry of Education?
Well, certainly not to us, because we wouldn't be privy to them, but I don't think there is a commitment on the funding at this point. Mr. Stebb.
Not to my knowledge. I do know the school district has made it a very high priority to try to secure the capital funding from the province. They have a whole process that they have to go through. The first thing is to secure the land. The second thing is to secure the construction. They have not yet got approval for the construction, but it is a very high priority for them, and we will be helping them in any way we can in terms of joint lobbying with the province, but as I said earlier, the school board has to lead that.
So no MOUs, letters of intent, in place?
They wouldn't be with us anyway. They would be with the school board, and I don't know. But there was a process related to the sale of surplus land, a long public consultation process that the school board embarked on last year, because that was one of the conditions that the province had made, was, you've got some extra land, could you rationalize your land holdings so that you, the school board can provide some of the funding for the land and construction that's necessary up in Burke Mountain? But that, that process is, is completed, and now we're, we're on the next stage. And Mr. McIntyre, our general manager of planning and development.
Thank you, Worship, and good evening. I can't answer the speaker's question, but what I can say, and I think some of the other staff have alluded to this, the, the school district has an incredibly arduous zigzagging path to get to a school. path to get to a school, and there's various stages along that way, and construction is down that path. The fact that we're here tonight, moving not just the designation under the official community plan, but actually the zoning of a site, like this would only be the second zone site if it's to be supported on Burke Mountain, would be a very important, positive move. I think it was mentioned that that's the sort of information that the province, the Ministry of Education looks at as sort of proof positive that that community is planning, is open and ready for that, that facility. The one piece, though, and it hasn't been mentioned, that we do play a bit of a role in, in helping the school district come up with the funding to pay part of their share of acquiring sites is through development. And the city has a system called development cost charges, that helps pay for our roads and water and sewer and parks and so on and so forth. There's a parallel system that we collect, that we remit to the school district, that they hold on account, and that money plus funds from the ministry enables them to go buy these properties. And that's a school site acquisition charge. So for each lot that we create up in Burke Mountain, or anywhere in Coquitlam, or any apartment unit, we collect what are called school site acquisition charges, S S A Cs. And I just checked with staff, and right now currently, those S S A Cs for northeast Coquitlam are running at a rate of about $1,000 per lot. By comparison, we collect maybe 20, 22,000 for school, or for, pardon me, for city D C C. So each, each lot, if you look at the 137 lots proposed, 137 by $1,000, that would be the funds if the subdivision was to go ahead based on a supportive zoning, that would then be remitted to the school district to enable them to, to purchase these, these school sites.
Through the mayor, though, would that, this site, though, not be servicing the already built and in place several thousand? So we're talking millions of dollars in that S S A C?
Each one of those lots on the mountain has contributed to the school sites, yes.
Okay. So we'd, rather than being 137,000, we'd be in the millions.
We, yeah, the province has enabled cities to collect for school districts, a school site acquisition charge for each subdivision and each lot. And so all through the mountain, there have been monies collected and remitted to the school district to help them purchase sites and ultimately to, to construct schools.
May I ask approximately how many sites have been completed and sold to date in northwest of Burke Mountain area?
You opened it.
And perhaps our general manager of strategic initiatives can assist with this. There's, there's one site only that I'm aware of, and that's the, the planned secondary school site at David and Sobel. That property transfer has taken place. There's the other ones that were mentioned, the Smiling Creek Elementary, which is very, very close. This would be zoned. The others are either designated in the official community plan or are sort of there waiting on the shelf.
I'm sorry, I, perhaps, perhaps I was misunderstood. I was asking how many residential lots have been sold in order to generate funds to contribute to this S S A C?
We're really far off the zoning of this site, but I'm gonna, I'll get the answer to that question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, worship, I totally misunderstood the question. I don't have that number in hand. We're into several thousand lots, maybe already up there. I'd have to check the numbers on that, so.
And other, and other lots developed elsewhere in the city and elsewhere in the school district, which includes Port Coquitlam, Port Moody, Belkara, and Anmore, all contribute into the school site fund.
Right.
So we, all the way through the, the region, the tri-cities, they're collecting money and submitting it to the school, school district for site acquisition. But at the price of land these days, that gets used up quickly, so.
Okay.
So that's part of the reason for the sale of surplus lands and for the province having to come to the table with some additional monies as well.
And I guess, a follow-on, is it possible to incent the, the school board or Ministry of Education by withholding those funds? Or are you legislating? Remit them?
That would be a no. That is a no. It is a legislation that we do not have any flexibility with.
Oh, come on. Well.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
We're not ruling it out. I'll tell you, 15 years ago, I was part of a group, go ahead, 15 years ago, I was part of a group that was trying to get Summit Middle built at the top or in the bottom of Burke, of Westwood Plateau. Same situation, the school district was kind of powerless, the province hadn't funded it, and this is 1997 or 1998, and we developed a campaign, and that's what I think we may end up having to do in the tri-cities, is trying to figure out how to get a campaign going on Burke Mountain to get the resolution of these school issues as quickly as possible. The city absolutely wants this, absolutely passionately wants this, as does every resident up there. So we've got a lot of, and for that matter, the builders and developers up there, they want those schools built too, and they've been talking to us about whether there's anything they can do to facilitate this process. So I don't want to focus the entire public hearing on, on a school district issue, but this is, no question, a big issue for the residents up there, and we are right there with you. Thank you, though. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this zoning? Please.
Michelle Mergol, 3483 Galloway Avenue. Mary Stewart. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous. You had mentioned that the city's responsible for the planning, city plan. My biggest issue is that the current city plan, which posted at the foothills of Burke Mountain, is not accurate. That city plan is what I use to buy my house. And so my concern with future building and future plans, and those 137 other families who will be basing their investments, their decisions, on your city plan.
Which part of it wasn't accurate? I'm sorry.
Where the three school sites are. So where I live, if your city plan was accurate, I would be in the middle of three school sites, elementary, middle school, community center, high school, which adds probably about 10 to 15% value to my house. My concern would be that perhaps West Build is using these city plans as a marketing tool to sell other families to buy houses. They're using these plans for profitable, profitable gain, not ethically, and that's why I would recommend not going ahead with future building and putting these plans ahead so that people can base their decisions based on something that's not going to happen. I think that by denying this building, it'll put pressure on West Build when they're dealing with the provincial government who supplies the funds. If West Build can't build, they'll put pressure on the provincial government, and we might see some future schools in our area a lot quicker.
Okay, I thank you for that. I, I'll tell you this, though, West Build has been at the table with us, screaming, pounding, trying to get these schools built. We have.
I don't believe that, because why wouldn't they work that?
They were there, I was in the room. I was, they've been at these meetings, they have been phoning, trying to get, phoning me, trying to nag me about getting the schools built, because it's really important.
But you can't build this school, they should know that. They should be dealing, they bought the land from the provincial government when they were negotiating their deal. Why didn't they secure the funding?
Okay, well, unfortunately, they were buying the, the land from an arm of the provincial government. If you think West Build is that powerful, I, I know, I, I don't know that they are. I hope, well, maybe, maybe we will start talking to them, but I, the representative of West Build is saying that they absolutely want these schools built. They have been to the school board, I know that the owner of West Build has actually been to the school board and offered to bridge finance, has offered any number of mechanisms to try to get the schools built, because it, it's really important to them and the, as, as one of the major landowners up there. But it's really important to us, and we have tried everything. One of the things we know is that the province has schools to build in Surrey, and they have schools to build in Coquitlam. We need the pressure on for the ones here in Coquitlam, rather than the ones in Surrey, or rather than just the ones in Surrey. And the only thing that will matter then is that the process continues, that we continue to develop the, the mountain. I recognize your frustration, I really do. And I have, we have, we have all racked our brains trying to apply pressure to the province.
So would it not be a financial issue, though? That would be my point, is that West Build is, is buying 370 acres from the provincial government. So if their source of income stops, they're not going to be happy about that.
The check is cleared.
The check is cleared, okay. So then, in terms of allocating the money towards Coquitlam versus Surrey, just so I can clarify in my own mind, who would be the direct, most likely person to influence this? If you're responsible for planning, would it be school district 43 is not influencing the provincial government as well as Surrey? Would that be it?
No, I wouldn't say that. I think ultimately it comes, I was involved, I'm not going to get into debate here, but I, I will explain this. I was involved actually in a, in a protest 15 years ago about schools in Surrey, because they had the same kinds of challenges, that the schools weren't getting built and the parents were having to drive long distances to get their children to school. Right now, there is a bit of a freeze on that kind of capital spending, and we need to get past that. It's not a complete freeze, but we need to make sure that our schools are the highest priority, and it means partnering with the school district on making sure the sites are already zoned, that the school is, is ready to go, it's shovel-ready, and that we, then we start to continue the political pressure to make sure that the province understands how vitally important it is that our schools get built here in the Northeast. And I don't want the middle school in the 2023 or something like that, I want it earlier than that. I think we all are absolutely behind you. And right now, with a new school board and a new superintendent, I think we can apply the pressure that needs to be applied, and with West Build and the development industry as well, to make sure they get built. And that's our goal right now, is to have an announcement about a shovel in the ground sometime in the next few months.
Okay. That's good, thanks. Just, my final comment would just be, as you mentioned, you're responsible for developing the city plan. To please try and keep it as accurate as possible until the plan's executed, it's really worthless, and if people are investing a million dollars, we should have accurate, not misleading, information.
I hear you entirely. Yep. In fact, one of the suggestions was that we put futures, or proposed school, or some other language like that, on sites that the school board has designated that they want for a school, but since we can't force them to build one there, they can modify their plan, and we're left with this situation where I have to answer for a plan that the school board, that's where they, that's where they drew their school, and they didn't build one there. So I understand. Oh, Counselor Hodge, again.
Yeah, just, I just want to bring this back to the land, to land use. And again, the resident mentioned that she lives in an area that's between three schools that aren't going to, there's some concern over that. But my understanding, there's, there's several different levels. There's, there's the neighborhood plan, there's the, you know, there's different levels. But what we're talking about tonight is the highest protection that a piece of property can have, because once, if this goes through tonight and it is zoned school, there, there's no changing that without coming back here to a public hearing. So, so while there are plans out there, and I've seen them, they're in my neighborhood, you know, big maps and saying, future, future, those are plans, but, but the plans revolve a number of different, there's a number of different factors that come into those plans, including school enrollment, and whether or not the school district has the money to build, and whether that school's in the right location. And as we sort of build out the mountain, these things become more finalized. But this tonight is a step in actually finalizing some of that plan. And so I just want to go through again, if this is approved tonight, there's, what, what other uses? It has to be that, I mean, there's no guarantee that the school board will get the money and all of that, but from a land use decision tonight, this is the highest protection we can put on that as a school. Is that correct?
Mr. McIntyre.
Your worship, that is correct. This, this is where our official community plan, and it showed as a potential school site, as you look at that area, there's an E in a circle, and if you read the legend, it says potential. So we're landing that E. So we're going to do two things, it's supported by council. The official community plan is going to be amended to take that from an E in a circle to being a green spot on a map, you know, on a specific property. And as Counselor Hodge says, along with the O C P amendment, will be the rezoning. So it'll be, to my knowledge, only the second site, school site in northeast Coquitlam will have that zoning in place.
So this will be only the second?
Through the Counselor, through the Counselor Hodge, just want to add, in the report, we also note that school district 43, the province and the applicant are in a tri-party agreement. And if council grants the O C P and rezoning amendment, third reading, it's not for fourth and final, that would only be brought forward once that agreement is finalized.
And this is obviously being done in conjunction with the school board, and everybody's sort of on, on the same page on this one, we hope. We're good. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Counselor O'Neill?
The point of information here, and it's to share with the last speaker, I believe that our official community plan identified eight potential sites for schools on Burke Mountain. Since then, the school district has said that it's not allowed to build smaller schools anymore, it has to build bigger schools, and it only needs five schools on Burke Mountain. And those are the five that I talked about earlier. So three of those sites are, three of the sites of the eight sites that are identified there will not be needed. And as the school board keeps making its decisions, and as we keep working through the process, the sites that aren't going to be needed are becoming ever more apparent. I think there's already something you might be, some, you might be able to rule out, but it's up to the school board to say very clearly the ones it does not need. They said, but as I said, it only needs five, and there are eight sites designated right now. And we're trying to move through that process, so it's much more clear. I don't know if there's anything that the general manager can add to that in terms of helping the residents understand, or maybe even helping clarify a little more about which sites are actual school sites of those eight. We know now, we know that the high school was definitely one, the Smiling Creek is definitely one. If, if this one goes through, it would be the third.
Should I believe the number was seven, and one was the ranch that has since been ruled out?
Oh, I think it was eight, I counted eight.
Okay, okay. But in any case, that's the decisions that we're, we're left with, because we can designate sites and then zone them when the applicant applies. And the applicant is now applying, along with the landowner, for one of the sites. The question is, should we zone it for a school? And that's for us now. I've got Counselor, do you want an answer from over there?
Yes, if there's anything the general manager can add to that.
I'm probably, I'm probably the best person to respond to that, because I've had the most recent discussions with the senior school board staff in that regard. Everything you said is exactly right. The question is finalizing exactly the five sites. The discussions I've had in the last month lead me to believe that we're all on the same wavelength, that the faster we can finalize the precise sites, the better. We're going through a process right now in conjunction with school board staff with a view to trying to finalize exactly what those five sites would be, and hopefully we will be in a position within two or three months to report out publicly on that. The school board staff would have to report out to their school board, we have to report out to council, and then we can finalize that. The good news is three of the five sites are already firm and are, with the approval of this application, will be almost complete in terms of giving the school board the land. At least two other sites, there is language in the deal with the province that West Build have made, that West Build is obligated by a certain timeframe to sell property in those two areas at original cost to the school board. Now, it's not quite finalized exactly where the sites are and all those kind of things, so all of that has to be worked on. My, my hope is that in the next three months or so, we will have a very definitive plan that we can roll out to the community, and everybody will know exactly where the five sites are exactly, and we can move further along the lines of lobbying the province in terms of the construction dollars. And so I think we're close to not approve a subdivision that locks up one of the sites that everybody's in agreement would. As I said earlier, it would be a retrograde step.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item?
Hi, Sandra Marsden, 3420 Highland Drive on Burke Mountain. I've been a resident there for 45 years. As we've heard from the residents tonight, it's kind of a sleight-of-hand walnut shell game and pea game. The only thing is, is that this is being played with school sites. Where is the school site now? And all this information, you know, was really helpful. Certainly, what you just said, Mr. Steblin, has clarified the developer's obligation in agreements with the province, which is really good information for the residents to know a little bit of what is going on. You know, this is not a shell game. Residents invest in their homes, community, and schools, and we've heard that from these folks. Can you, can school sites be expropriated? Expropriation of land, is that possible for school sites?
Not without paying for them, so we still have to come up with the money.
Sorry?
Not without paying for them. The school board would still, I don't know if they can expropriate, but they still have to pay market value.
Yeah, and usually they have to pay more than market value, because expropriation rules are very, very difficult. That might have been a problem in the past, especially with the Smiling Creek school, as there was, as Perry Stenicia said, there was at least seven or eight owners, different owners. Those deals have all been reached. The other sites are not as problematic with respect to the owners, because you have a willing seller, because the sites are, there will not be a problem in terms of the owner selling the land. There will be a potential problem with coming up the money to pay that owner, because that owner owns the land and has to be compensated for it. So as I said earlier, there's a whole process of funding. First, there is a process of actually determining exactly where those final school sites are, but that's not the real hurdle. The real hurdle is the provincial dollars for the capital construction of the schools. We now will have the site locked up for Smiling Creek, we will have this site locked up, so we have the sites for two of the elementary schools, which are the highest priority. We need the construction dollars. So it's no longer the location of the schools that's the main hurdle, it's the construction dollars. And as everybody has said earlier, we're in a process, the school district is in a process of liaison with the province to try to get those funding, and we will help any way we can. And I know our mayor and our council will do everything they can to impart upon the province the urgency of this.
Now, when Mr. Steblin refers to "we," he actually has been working on this so long. This is still the school district that has those challenges and has the money, and he was referring to the school district, but the city has been, City of Coquitlam has been way a bit more involved than cities normally are in this, because we really want these school sites developed as quickly as possible, and we're willing to do anything that we can do.
One of the questions is how are school sites selected? Now, I sat on the OCP, as did Counselor Asmanson and Counselor Hodge, and the Partington Creek, I'm sure, was no different than the OCP committee, as was for us, for Upper, Lower, and Smiling Creek. And how it worked was the city and the school district got together, and the developers, and they figured out where the school site should go. It was brought back to the committee, and we kind of went, uh-huh, 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 because we don't have that knowledge. But one thing that we do know is that school districts do have a formula for determining school site locations. And part of that formula is based on the number of units or homes, and the other is based on the demographics, the age of the kids, that type of thing, how many kids will be coming through. But if the council, as this young lady up here says, doesn't stick to the plan, gee, haven't you heard me say that before? And we're about a thousand, I would guess we're at least a thousand townhomes over what the plan was that I sat on the OCP. No wonder the school district can't figure out how many school sites or where they should be, because those numbers keep changing. So if those numbers are used in their calculation, that's one thing, and also...
It's not accurate, but go ahead.
Does anybody know what the catchment area will be for this school site?
I'm certain that no one here would know the catchment area of this school site.
Okay.
And it will undoubtedly change once homes open, and then once the school opens, that's normally when they set the catchment boundaries.
I guess the second-to-last comment I want to make is, the Sheffield site names the educational institute not an elementary school, as you state, but "school." And once approved for "school," there's nothing to stop the school district. That seems to have a bit of a reputation for moving and removing school sites, from changing its mind again and deciding that this Sheffield site should become a middle school, because it's centrally located, and the elementary school could be placed geographically on either side, or "school" can also mean Montessori school, or preschool slash daycare. The Sheffield site should be named for what it's proposed and planned, although you said it was a guarantee, this is the highest level. It's planned as an elementary school, not just school.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering if there could be a covenant placed on that, so that, or some wording that ensures that this civic site could only be an elementary school?
Well, I'm certain we could put a covenant on it, but we don't own it, they do. But if we did put a covenant on it, that would only mean that they would choose not to build there, if that wasn't where they wanted the type of school they wanted to build. We can't force them to build, there's no way to force them to build an elementary school there. There's no way to force them to build a school there, although they...
So what you're saying is that...
We're left, it's not big enough for a middle school, it's certainly not big enough for a high school, it's, and they don't build preschool slash daycares for School District 43, they only build schools, so it's going to be, I suspect it's going to be an elementary school.
Well...
But we can only do the zoning. We can't force them to do anything.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing, the shell game could just continue.
Well, calling it a shell game, I think, is really unfortunate, because I think the school district is trying to do its best in meeting the demand, given a whole bunch of hoops that Mr. Steblin talked about. I'm not supporting the way we develop schools in this province, but for the last 30 years, that's the way we do it. And we've got to get a better system of putting in place schools. Everybody agrees with that. Even members of the provincial government recognize that this is not the way that we should be developing schools. We should be putting them in place as people move into new neighborhoods, rather than five years later.
One, just one last comment. When we started coming to these public hearings, when this mountain started to develop, and we all got involved as residents, the few of us that were living here, I thought, I recall, that we weren't going to have on-street parking, that people would have their, they would have their driveways, they would have their garages. And now, I hear that for this site, and probably forward-going, the planning is going to maximize on-street parking on both sides, which means developers are going to have to give more of their property for parking, and yet the garages, instead of for holding cars or whatever, are now holding suitcases or barbecues or whatever. So I certainly would like to see...
Are you speaking against on-street parking?
I am speaking against on-street parking, yes.
Okay. Now, council has taken a firm position that we wanted to provide as much on-street parking as we can in most of these neighborhoods, because parking's at a premium. It has been a, it has been a challenge in some neighborhoods, so we're trying to provide as much, so that when visitors come, when there's Christmas parties, that there's places to park the visitors.
But I recall that we were going to try to minimize on-street parking in this mountain.
If I could just make a comment...
Mr. Steblin.
Thank you.
The original plans for the mountain were very prescriptive, and in hindsight frustrated some of the laudable intents that were envisioned at the time, and a number of problems arose, which council is very aware of. One of them was the on-street parking issue. There's huge shortages, and we have made a modification to those original plans, because original plans didn't work as well as they could or should have. The same comment applies to the original plan related to the school sites. The original plan called for eight, we no longer need eight, because the size of the schools have grown bigger, we need five, and so we need some flexibility going forward. And any good plan needs to adjust in response to changing conditions, and that's what we are doing here.
Thank you. Counselor Asmanson.
Well, I guess I just want to make it clear that the provincial government changed the size requirements for elementary schools, and that's why there was a reduction. Sandra, I was on those committees, we went through those, those were potential sites for schools under those rules. The governor's going to change them, they've reduced them down. For about a year and a half or more, we have been pressuring the school board to give us the exact locations, now that they know they don't need all those school sites, where are they going to be? They finally, we got the Smiling Creek, now we got this one, because if we don't have the land, we can't build the school. So we got the Smiling Creek, we're going to get this one. Now that we have these, now we can get the schools. If we don't have this, you don't have the schools. Talking about the plan, we created a plan up there, but when we saw Marguerite and everything being built up there, and I'll take responsibility, I'm the one that pushed to have wider streets for parking on both sides of the street, because, as Craig Hodge will attest to, it didn't work. We had a new urbanism strategy that we put through that didn't work, and we're responsible to the needs, the people that were up there, talking about the need for proper on-street parking. And we've done a lot of things to improve that, another thing is about pairing driveways, so we don't have driveways and things, we get more on-street parking to deal with the issue here. We put on-street, we don't want to have, like we did up in the first little bit, where we have parking on one side of the street only, and the issues dealing with it up there. I'll take blame, I'll take credit, I was the one that pushed for those changes. When you get into a development and you start to see things that you thought might work, don't work, I think it's a responsibility to revise that and look at that and change that. A plan is not a static document. When we went through the plan and we did our OCP, I was on the Upper, Lower, Smiling Creek areas, and it was always told to us from planning and the different planners that time, that these are fluid documents, they're not prescriptive, written-in-stone documents, because you don't know what the difference is when to get on the ground. But this council has been successfully pressured the school board to identify some of the sites. And we've got one site, we've got the second site. If we don't have the sites, we'll never get a school built. That's the reality of it. We now have these sites, we pass this tonight, we'll have our second site done, and I want to get the sites there so we can get the schools on Burke Mountain. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. My name is Isabel Sylvester, and hopefully you have the opportunity to read the letter I submitted this morning. And the emotions and the sentiments really aren't from me, they're from the people that you hear here, people who aren't present, the people who I've gone and I've gotten to know in my neighborhood. And unfortunately, as Amy had commented already earlier, the external people, the residents of Burke Mountain, don't have a positive opinion about how the, how all the stakeholders, and the city included, are sort of working or not working in terms of developing schools and amenities for the community. I know it's not just, you know, the item today is not just about schools, and you can't build schools and so forth. However, I do want to voice that there, you know, there needs to be more consultation. There's a lot of good things that I have now recently been aware of, and made aware of, because I've been part of attending meetings, but the general public is not aware of those things. We don't get the newspaper delivered to us. I was made aware of this public hearing because I attended one of the northeastern Coquitlam Rapporters' meetings, and was put on the council newsletter mailing list, the notifications in the newspaper, I get the Tri-City paper, but not the now, which was where the notification came through for this public hearing. Many individuals are not aware of that they're able to put a voice about all these changes that are coming into play, they have strong ramifications on what they thought your vision was. The OCP, they bought, people bought land and homes based on this. This is not a car, this is not like, you know, when it stops losing its shine, you know, turn it in. This is a 50,000 minimum investment, two over a million dollars, that people are investing their lives. You sell homes, you help build homes, we buy, oh, sorry, you help build houses, we make homes. And these homes are families, and these homes are people that want to work and play and really be proud, as you hear these people say, they came here to buy a dream home. With all these things and amenities, we're just looking at a way where we can all work together. The people that are new to the Tri-Cities, like, we want to know, what can we do, how can we, do we, do you need us to rally to the government, like, what can we do to help make this happen? And for us to be more aware and inclusive, we have a lot of individuals who, English is an additional language, have no idea how to go or proceed, don't, even myself, this is the first time I'm standing in front of all of you, have no idea how it all goes around. I'm standing there, not sure what to do, and, you know, this is my first time sort of coming to the public and voicing my opinions, but I'm, you know, and people look up to me and my community and go, you should go out there and thank you for putting up a voice. But there's a lot of people whose voices are not being heard, and it's unfortunate that things are not being inclusive as they should be. So when people are looking at these announcements of more homes to be built, there's red flags, because when they look at a rezoning of a middle school and community center for more densification housing, a school that was slotted, but now we see community gardens, you know, those are mixed messages. And that's what they see, but they don't necessarily see all the works that you might be doing right now, that yes, in April, most likely, there will be some schools coming through Smiling Creek. People don't know this. I do. That letter didn't show that when you read it this morning. Those are the sentiments of most people out there, and it's unfortunate, and it doesn't have to be that way. So as Amy had also alluded, to really create some task force, a meeting, something more, more allowing the public to have a little bit more say in what is happening in terms of the development that's going through, we'd love to see a school, we'd love to see more schools. I'm concerned that there's only five schools being slotted. My son was 110th on the list for Lee Elementary, and was told to go elsewhere. So two more elementary schools? Hmm, that was four more classrooms. I don't know if that really is enough for that section up on our hill. And thinking of all the kids in our neighborhood, there is not one child on our street that goes to the same school. There is nine little boys, all from their ages between four and 11, and they all go to different schools, all feeding into the Tri-Cities area, because there is no school that takes them locally in our neighborhood. That's not community. And I know you don't do, build schools, but we need to work together to make this happen. And when we hear this, it really, you know, strikes a knife, as you can hear on a lot of these individuals. And this is just, the optics that this, how the city is going about and doing this is just not hitting their positive nerves, so...
Okay.
My comment is to really get something going in terms of creating a stronger group so we can have something happen.
As I said earlier, we're actually going to do that, but right now, we have done a tremendous amount, and I guess, I gather, we haven't communicated it that well, and I wish both newspapers arrived on your porch, because they're both great newspapers.
Well, there's construction, and by law, you can't send someone out and drop off papers under construction.
I'm not second-guessing the letter, the carrier, though. We are doing everything we can to get those schools built, and this has been a longstanding problem in every developing community, where the development has to continue in order for the schools to get built, but the schools are always built, for some reason, five years late. I wish, I wish there was a different way. There are better ways to do it, but we don't do it that way in this province for some reason.
So it's always the cart before the horse?
No, 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 no.
Well, that's what's happening.
The people arrive, obviously you need the students before the schools. The challenge right now is that we have this big delay between the students arriving and the schools being built, and we're trying to get that solved. We are applying a lot of pressure, you can't imagine it. You should contact your MLA, because the school being built is a provincial responsibility. You should contact your school board, make sure they understand how absolutely urgent this is. I think they do, because they're now working very closely with us on a whole bunch of initiatives. In the end, Counselor Asmanson explained it correctly, it used to be a three-and-a-quarter was a good elementary school, and now it's 450, so you don't need five... so you don't need five elementary schools, you need three elementary schools. And so they've dropped two of the sites right away, and our challenge is that we get blamed for it because they asked for those schools to be designated on the official community plan. We can also designate a piece of property for a coffee shop, but we can't force anyone to build a coffee shop there, and I know that's another amenity up there that we need. Those are the challenges we have.
But a coffee shop probably would have said yes to the, to the location if the New York Community Center was being built.
I know.
Because they base their purchasing, and like, you think of Subway and you think of 7-Eleven.
I'm sorry for bringing that up because we really have to focus a little bit more on this site, but the school board doesn't, isn't in a position of competition, or at least they don't perceive that they are, and so, and neither is the province particularly.
But why they need to put this as a package deal? Because that's what it really is. And, and so this, this property, which is P1, the land is being, it was sold to who? From who to who? The school that we're talking about. Who owned the land and who, who was it sold to?
I can provide, it is very complicated history. I believe this is the site where there was an original Crown Grant from the province to Westbuild, who had the obligation to sell it, give it on to the school district. The boundaries changed slightly. There was lots of negotiation between the school district and the landowner, which was Westbuild. At the end, as part of this rezoning request, both parties agreed on the shape and the exact location of the school board site, which is a significant amount of progress. And so as part of this application, the school board will get this land exactly where they need it. And so this, I see this application as some small degree of success on the journey towards getting fully functioning schools up there. But these kind of processes are long and complex. Just rest assured that at the end of this, the school board will own this site.
Okay. But, but the, but today's price that the school paid was on today's market value, not on the original price?
No, no. It's very complex.
I'm ready for the complex. And I think these people deserve that, that.
Ma'am, it's, the, the public hearing is about what is the best land use for this site. It isn't about what is the history of the transactions. So unfortunately, the reality is that the province owned the site, and they made, the developer that purchased it, they said, you're going to sell it back to the school district at a given price. Is it not, is that the other way it was?
That was the process for the other two sites. On the, on the recent transaction, this site goes back to an older process that is no longer utilized, but they called it a Crown Grant process, where the province, who originally owned the land, gave a Crown Grant for the purpose of public amenities, the school being one of those. The province doesn't do that anymore, but this particular site still fell under that process some time ago. The exact boundaries didn't match, and so there had to be some negotiation with the district. And that is how all this happened. But the bottom line is those negotiations have happened. The school board did not pay an inappropriate amount of money for this site. In fact, I was told by the developer that the developer bent over backwards in order to make it very affordable for the school district, and I believe that to be so. And, and so all of that happened, and the school board will end up owning this site.
So when this goes through, because today's meeting is really just a formality, how long will it take for that construction of this potential school?
I'm not going to be able to answer that because this is about the land use on the site. Is that an appropriate school site? The school board will build the school or not at their, at their speed. The province will approve that or not at their speed. I can't guarantee either, any of those, and if I answered you now, someone would hold me to that answer, even though it's completely outside of the control of council.
You completely answered my question. Thank you.
You can tell her what the school board said if you like. Yes.
So can I.
Okay. The, the school board, this, I believe, is the Partington Creek Elementary School, which the school board said would be built by 2021. That's what the school board said in December of 2012. They said that, and I have.
On what stats?
Not to ask them.
Okay.
Okay? That's what they told.
Counselor Wilson.
I want to thank you for your passion and your interest. I think it's, it's, it's awesome. It's admirable. I empathize with you. I'm frustrated with the whole process. I think we do need to do a better job of communicating with, with the residents. I think we need to aim for deeper consultation and try to be more innovative in how we do our consultation. And you asked us, you know, what can you do as a resident to try to speed this up? Are you familiar with any petitions that have been delivered to the province about school sites in Burke Mountain?
No.
I'm not either. And I think that would be one thing that the community could do. If it hasn't already done it, may have done it, but I haven't heard. I think having 100 people show up to the MLA's office demanding more action on schools might help. I think letters to the premier, the education minister, and the MLAs would help, right? I think those are the kinds of things that the community can do. You've heard enough of us saying we've done what we're doing, but I think if the community starts, starts really asserting themselves and really making it clear that they're not going to take this anymore, I think that's, that's one thing that could help speed this up. You know, unfortunately, in terms of the Smiling Creek school, you know, as soon as the land is finalized, they'll start designing the school. The province hasn't put the money in yet, but they'll still start working, the district will start working on it probably. The more pressure that the residents can put on the provincial government to release that money to make sure it happens, to come up with a creative solution to this problem, the better for everybody. So that would be my, my suggestion, is if, if the community could, could really start pushing.
Can I have one more last suggestion? There is a Galloway sort of park, which seems to be the only real, I think, center that really binds. I think a lot of families will come there. There's, there's no boards, there's no, nothing really up in a way of, I think there, again, I've heard some great things that have come out recently about things that are moving, but we are not made aware of any of these things, not even, you know, these rezoning maps and so forth, that, to just put out some notices to the community. I know the, the fire hall is in negotiations, I believe, with Northeast Coquitlam Ratepayers in terms of doing some signage, but that's, that's going to be sort of really far for most residents, but for Galloway or maybe even Victoria Park, something sort of, to have something more visible in terms of just notifying the residents what's happening, progression that's happening, other than newspapers that really, due to construction, are just not being sent. And that seems to be the only way unless people are going to websites. I don't translate in Korean, and I don't translate in Chinese, and most of that mountain too, that, that's their main languages. So it's, those are the challenges that are, that are, we're faced with, but it's important to try, and I don't think the city is really putting out the word of what's being happening or what's moving on that mountain as well as it could be.
Yeah. I think you've got concurrence from us. We'll do, we'll do more, and we'll try to, we'll continue to try. And ultimately, I agree with Counselor Wilson, we've got to get the community rallied toward getting it done, and it has to get, the funds have to be released from, from Victoria, and they have to be released at the, at the local school board, and those initiatives need to be put in place as quickly as possible. Thank you very much. Counselor Hodge.
The staff, I, we did put the ads in the newspaper. Normally on this, we put up signage on the property as well. The challenge here is that now we're pushing into some areas of Burke Mountain that aren't populated, and I think in some areas here, the roads aren't even in place. Is it possible that when we put those boards up on the property, that maybe we can put a board up sort of more in a central location saying a property, you know, half a mile up the road is subject to, to property? I'm just wondering if we can treat zoning and these type of things on the far-reaching backwoods, if you will, of Burke Mountain, if, if there's maybe a different way to approach signage up there for these type of developments in the future? Just as a, just as a suggestion. So signs, we've gone through this on neighborhood plans in Mayardville, Berquitlam, and there doesn't seem to be any one way to do it. We do email blasts, we do website, we do newspaper ads, we do paper, we do signboards, but signboards don't really work when something's way out in the, in the woods here. I mean, I'll just pass that on as, as a suggestion. To the resident who just spoke, I, I agree. I think the best thing that you're rallying petitions, that all works, but I think you have to get the right information first. We've tried to give you as much information as we can, even in the context of what's a public hearing about the specific piece of property. But as I mentioned earlier, I've talked to the school trustees, and, and I think that if they hear residents also saying, we deserve to have a meeting, we deserve to hear the information directly from the people who make those decisions, we make a different set of decisions here in, you know, in parallel to what they do, and, and they're the best group to give you some, the answers to some of the questions that have been, that have been asked here tonight. One of the challenges that I have up there, when I see the plan, is elementary school in two years, an elementary school in four years. I think that when the first elementary school opens in two years, if it opens in two years, we're going to need the second one. This is the second one. So it may be, one of the questions that I'll be asking is, can we build two schools at the same time? Because we're pretty much going to need two schools five years from now. Are there some economies of construction to build two at the same time? I think those are valid questions that, that I will be asking as a resident up there of the people who make the school decisions. So I think that's one of the things you need to do, and, and the timing. Two, two elementary schools, then a secondary school, then the middle school, that order doesn't make sense to me. So I think those are the questions that you deserve answers to, and I urge you to ask those questions to the people who are best suited to give you those answers.
Ms.?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's way down the road. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just, just wanted to note that the applicant provided, it goes, gets third reading tonight, has agreed to put up an information signage on their development, since it is a new area on Burke, Burke Mountain.
Okay. So the applicant will probably then also put signage up on some other spot that's closer to where the people live than just on that property. I'll count on them to do that. I see a smile at least. Are there any other speakers to this item? Come forward, Janet.
Janet Klopp, 3440 Highland Drive. Counselor Hodge, I thought too that we should ask for two, two schools built at the same time. Perhaps there would be some savings because make no, no bones about it, the children are there now, and the strollers are rolling. We see them on our street, and, you know, this thing about, you know, build, you know, the people, and then the schools should be built because, you know, get the people there first. The people are there now, and those homes that were built up there, they were designed for families. That's what we were, totally what we were expecting. So we do need these schools, and forgive us if we're really distrustful of this whole thing because, I mean, you know, when Westbuild built out Westwood Plateau 25 years ago, we signed nicely and said, yes, we'll agree to that if you put it through the Evergreen Line, and we're just getting it now. So, you know, if Westbuild is at all able to do any kind of lobbying for this on their behalf, because I bet they'd be really upset if, if, if they couldn't keep working up there. And it's not that they aren't, you know, a good developer, and it's not that they aren't doing great things, but, but we need, we do need their help, and, and it just seems that some companies have more of an, you know, I would think that the provincial government might have more of an ear for some of these companies who are generating the economy in our community, generating the economy in our, in our province, and the rest of us kind of flail about a little bit and feel like we are unheard. And Westbuild is, is the biggest, one of the biggest companies we have in, in Coquitlam, and so I would just really appreciate it if, if they are able, on any level, to lobby for us for this because they're the ones that are mostly putting this together, and it is in their best interest to have schools there. And people are saying, like, if I can't have my child in a school, in a community school, you know, they may find that they're not selling their properties as fast as they think they should be.
I, I believe they've, I believe that's come to their, their thought processes at this point, but do you have any comments about the specific application?
I would love to see a school on Burke Mountain.
Well, oddly enough, there's one in this plan. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? For the third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item?
Oh, wait.
Okay. Anything in writing? Seeing nothing. I'll declare this item closed, Madam City Clerk. And for those that came out for that, thank you for your passion. Counselor Wilson said it well. Your passion will create the kind of community, will join with us in creating the kind of community we're trying to create, and we really, truly thank you for coming out.
Item two is an application to amend the city's zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 968 Stewart Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential, bylaw number 4506.
And in case anyone thinks there's a bias at the table, because this is, the name is Stewart, I'll remove the Stewart tartan. There you go.
That clarifies everything immensely.
Have you brought the Tiffany tartan?
Thank you. Good evening again, Council. This site is located on the south side of Stewart Avenue, just west of Le Blues. The site and surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site into the north, east, west, and south is RS1 One Family Residential. The site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site from RT1 to RT1 Two Family Residential in concurrence with the Neighborhood Attached Residential designation to facilitate subdivision of the site into two single-family lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning by law number 4506.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any?
My name's Rita Gill. Currently, I live at 8434 16th Avenue in Burnaby, but would like to relocate to Coquitlam. So I'm speaking to you today to consider rezoning 968 Stewart Avenue, and I appreciate that you allowed us the time to speak with you. We would like to put in an application to rezone so that we may build two homes on this site. I have partnered with my friend, Ms. Ahmed, who will speak later, so that we can make it both affordable for us to achieve our dreams. My uncle, Mick here, has helped me realize my lifelong dream of owning my first home and Ms. Ahmed's dream of building her retirement home. We have both gone and knocked on the doors to many of our neighbors. We've introduced ourselves and advised them of the plans for the property, and so far we haven't had any, any opposition to what we'd like to do. They were happy to meet with us, meet with us as well. I have been saving for a really long time so that I am able to go ahead and build a new home for myself. I am currently employed with Canada Revenue Agency. I have been a public servant for seven years. I will be personally moving into this home once it's finished. I would like to get married and start a family in this home. The home is being built at cost by my uncle with no profit involved. So I ask that you please allow the rezoning of application to go through so that I may realize my dream. Thanks you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? I wonder if you could grab the mic. There you go.
Counselors and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Biltees Ahmed, and currently I reside at 719 Danzy Avenue with my family. We are renting this place. I bought this land together with Rita Gill, who is a good friend of mine, and her uncle, Mr. Mick Sidhu of Western Homes, has promised to help us to build our homes. There will, it will be built at cost with no profit involved. Requesting, when we bought this land, we understood that it could be subdivided from an RS1 to RT1 zone, and this would allow us to build two single-family homes. We are people of moderate means, and sharing the land would make it a possibility to build our own home. My husband is retiring this year, and I'll be retiring next year. This will be our retirement home.
This will be our retirement home. This is the only chance we have to build our own home, to build our dream, dream home. The past year has been personally very difficult for me. I was critically ill, and now I'm slowly recovering. This is a chance for a new beginning for us, and that means it'll be a new home and a future without mortgage and debt. I thank you for your help in making this dream possible and for by permitting us to subdivide the land. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Hello. My name's Lorraine Irvin. I live at 963 Stewart, right across from the proposed development site.
Yeah.
I know this, this hearing is about the land use and the designation of land use. And I guess, aside from my, my personal wishes not to have my view blocked, my concern is that if, if this rezoning goes through, the potential for rezoning along the whole street is, I would think, fairly high. I also know that south of us, there's rezoning to this, I'm forgetting what the name is now, RT1, is it? Yeah. So I'm wondering, I'm thinking, that the plan is to move that zoning right up the mountain, right up to Austin, where we currently have several high-rises going in. And rezoning this particular property, I know doesn't make a huge difference to the population density, but if we project that ahead, I do see a problem with the number of people in this area and the infrastructure that we have. I already find that when I go out to Blue Mountain, it's like a little highway, and Marmont is the same way. And we have a large number of single-family dwellings there right now. The potential is that we will have two families across, possibly four, because they can also have suites or build lane dwellings or cottages, or whatever they call them. So if you project that further into the neighborhood, the potential is, is very real for overpopulation and for too many people in a, in an area that doesn't really have the infrastructure to support it. I believe there are plans up on Austin for as many as four or five high-rises going in. So I don't know how, the transportation in that area now is not very good. The parking, since there have been, there have been a number of duplexes go on the street, there are going to be parking issues. Where are people going to park if they're visiting? I know that this plan is allowing for lane access, and the parking will be allotted to those houses. But I, I just, I just see it as a thin edge of the wedge, and, and, and I have concerns with that.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item?
I'm Jamie Good. I live at 935 Stewart Avenue. I have a concern for two houses going on that lot. It is single-family dwelling now. We have a number of large houses. We have big parking problems now, so if, if this goes to two houses there, and chances are it going down the street, I think it's going to even cause more problem of, of parking. I don't know the width of these lots. There's other houses on the street that have been turned down to build duplexes and all that, but now it's not theirs. They've built a single-family dwelling, one house, and so they kind of lost out, because it wouldn't be a tear-down now. But to put that whole bottom row, they look similar in size. I guess that's close, but is it 67 feet? You, I'm not sure the width to go the two single-family dwellings, but, you know, that is, this is my dream area. It was bought as a single-family dwelling. I use it as a single-family dwelling, but I'm constantly parking, people parking in front of our house, or lots of houses going in where now their driveway's right up on their front yard. Everybody's parking out towards the street rather than parallel parking, even if you did have parking on both sides of the street. You really wouldn't have any parking on either side of the street if there was two houses on all these lots. So for me, I would recommend not go RT1. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Stewart Avenue, are any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, council members, staff, residents, and people interested in Coquitlam. My name's Preston Bulmaris. I'm the neighbor of this property, 962 Stewart Avenue in Coquitlam. I just want to say I'm a fan of the housing choices concept. With it, please continue to allow people to build the big houses that they want to build, but don't stop us from building the smaller ones that can keep our families in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this item? Oh, just one second, just one second. Oh, okay. Sir, did you want to come down now?
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am the, like, I'm the uncle of the niece that came up earlier, and like, this, this, there's your, my interest, only interest is to try to satisfy these two people so they can be able to have their own affordable homies. Like, the other families, Mr. Ahmed, and those guys are in their retirement time. They only have a very, and my niece is his first-time buyer. And this is the only way they can have any affordability, and these, this area is rezoned, and that's why how we invested the money into, so we can actually apply for subdivision, and they can have their dream homes. And for, as for parking, there are going to be two single garage homes in there and one, one pad, so there'll be three, three parkings in this, in each house on the property itself. Well, I think they should be allowed to have their dream home, and this is the only, only way it's just affordability. That's the whole idea, but you guys are putting a plan together, and this is based on that, that's why they, you know, purchased the property together.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would like to know if you'd be my uncle, too?
Sir, you have the distinction of the only person that's come before us that's going to be the uncle of Counselor May Reed. And she's like a sister to me, so I would make the. Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any other speakers to this item?
I am Danae Stavonovich. I live at 963 Stewart, across the street as well.
Sorry, your first, your name again?
Danae Stavonovich.
Yeah.
I live across the street as well. I have similar concerns to my mother. We've lived there for a very long time, and I think having a large duplex, well, not a duplex, two homes going into lot capacity like that may affect our property value, as I plan on living there for the rest of my life as well. And I just, I'm just not sure about the whole prospect of it, and I am worried about the parking situation as well. I just, that's about all. I just want to reiterate those worries. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much for coming up. Now, are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Madam Deputy City Clerk?
Item three is an application to amend the city's zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 1400 Haversley Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RS3 One Family Residential, bylaw number 4536.
Good evening again. This site is located on the south side of Haversley Avenue, west of Schoolhouse Street. The site and the surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site, and, turn that on, zoning on the site and to the east and west is RS1 One Family Residential, and to the immediate south is P2 Special Institutional. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RS3 One Family Residential on the western portion of 1400 Haversley Avenue to facilitate subdivision of the, of two sites, 1400 and 1404 Haversley, from two lots into three single-family lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning by law number 4536.
Counselor Zerillo.
I had a question for, if that's okay?
Yep.
Just two questions. The first one was about the lane width. It looks like we're going to have a variance in the width of lane. It'll be narrower for the rest of the lane and, and wider for this, for these three lots. Is that true?
Yes, through your worship, it's a primary access lane, because it runs parallel to an arterial, so it's an eight-meter pavement width relative to a six-meter pavement width for a local lane.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that, and so it will look different in the back lane?
Yes, it'll be a little wider.
Okay.
Yeah, more space there.
And then my other question was in regards to future development variance permit. It talks about the fact that, last sentence says that further information on an additional variance permit will be brought forward. What do we have outside of this 13.5, from 13.1 to 13.5? Like, what is the additional variance permit that we may see if we approve this tonight?
Through your worship, the, the variance would be for the middle lot that's shown there up on the subdivision plan, which is current, which would be a proposed lot width of 13.1 meters.
Yeah.
That would be a reduction from the minimum required 13.5 meters.
And that's the only one? There's not an additional one that?
That is correct.
That's the only one? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Counselor Hodge.
Yes, just a couple of questions. We've covered off the, the lane at the back. On the street, because this is now technically a subdivision, that means there'll be road, street improvements, sidewalks, is that correct?
Yes, through your counsel, that's correct. Curb, gutter, sidewalk, street trees, street lighting.
And does this affect the distance from the homes to the street? I know that we've received in our package here a letter from a resident who's concerned that the new homes may sit closer to the, to the street than existing homes. Is that correct, or a change in, in the siding rules for the zoning?
Through your worship, the, the siding of the proposed houses is going to be the minimum 7.6 meters for the front yard. I believe that the current siding is some of the single-family residences along that street are set back a little bit further than that minimum requirement.
Okay, thank you.
On that last point, so if the owner were to not get the subdivision and were to build two new homes, they would still be able to build the same, the proposed distance from the front street as is proposed here?
That is correct.
Without a variance? Okay.
That's the new rule.
Understood. All right. The applicant has registered to speak, and that is Abu Khairzadah. I'll let you do it, actually. In fact, I won't speak for you at all.
Good evening, dear prospective mayor and council members. My name is Abu Khairzadah.
Good chat.
I am the realtor who was involved in purchasing these lots for the owner, and on behalf of the owner tonight, I'm requesting the council to consider this subdivision. The two lots totaling 22,400 square feet, which are big, a big parcel of land, and being subdivided into three RS3 lots. A DVP, as they mentioned, is required, and I would like to add that the owners have accepted the registration of restrictive covenant on title to all three proposed lots that ensures compliance with accepted house concept and landscape plans required as a condition to the rezoning and DVP. Furthermore, the owners have done a great job of talking with the neighbors and communicating well in terms of the proposed plans, and some of the concerns that were arise are from the neighbors, where that the houses would not be identical, there would be only one suite, or one legal suite in each house, and that enough, or sufficient parking spaces in the back of the property.
Just to clarify, you said there would only be one suite, no wait, one legal suite in each house?
One legal suite in, in each house.
So would there be any other suites in any of the houses?
Well, apparently there were some, I guess, ideas that they would have coach houses or.
Okay. So you're only going to have one suite?
Yeah, one legal suite, yes.
Period.
In addition, the neighbors have shown a lot of support in favor of the subdivision now. They did decline the, the four subdivision last year. Lastly, I personally believe that this project will bring great changes to the neighborhood. For example, the 1404 Haversley, which is a junky home now, that, and it was used as a meth lab from the previous tenant that were living there, and caused a lot of disturbance and trouble for the neighbors, and then created an unsafe environment for the neighbors as well. That house will be gone if, if this gets approved tonight, and there will be three beautiful homes, which will bring the appearance of the street in a, in a very good condition, and the homes will definitely bring the other valleys of the other homes up in the, oh, I'm so nervous right now. It will bring up the valleys of the other homes as well. In conclusion, I would like to thank all the neighbors that have showed a lot of support, cooperation until this day, especially Joe Platso, who have been in contact with us personally, and has dedicated a lot of his time in, in making changes to make this happen for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, for one, I'm very happy to hear that you consulted well with the neighbors on this one, because that's a neighborhood that historically likes to be consulted. Our next speaker actually is one that you consulted with, I gather, Joe Platso. He's at 1394 Haversley, across this, down the road.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. Joe Platso, 1394 Haversley Avenue, and I live right beside the subject property. First time this application was read before council, it was unanimously defeated, and I believe, not because the residents were opposed to development, but rather they had issue with how it came about, and we didn't feel that there was enough consultation, a very lack of consultation, as a matter of fact, and we wanted to be a part of the process. This time around, I'm happy to say that the residents, or I mean, the, the applicants here, I think they learned from their errors this time around, and they came to the community right away, and they, I know they addressed me and many of the others by, you know, face-to-face communication, email, phone calls, numerous phone calls, and asked me, you know, in particular, what would I like to see. I feel like I've had a big part of the process, and I'd like to thank them for the opportunity to do that, but also all the residents on the street of Haversley for engaging in this and actually having a little bit of a part of it. And I think that's the way it really should work in future. I won't get into, you know, all the details, because I've, I've got a letter on file with a number of my concerns. Probably the biggest one I would have, I'm just going to say, you know, surprise, surprise, you know, parking, as we all know. I did make a recommendation that the detached garages at the lane would, could be recessed back to allow full driveway aprons at the rear to accommodate two cars side by side for each of the three dwelling units, and I think that would be a great way of dealing with parking. It will take the pressure off the street, and I'm not sure if, I believe they have said actually that they are going to fall through. said, actually, that they are going to fall through. These lots are quite deep and can accommodate quite easily, and maybe that's an example of a way of dealing with parking concerns in other areas of Coquitlam where they have these types of applications, and I encourage you to take a look down. The other thing I wanted to just mention is there is a lane, there is a turnaround in the lane right by our property, right by the property line there, and the only thing I would add to that is I'm not opposed to it. I'd just like to make sure that there's a no parking sign in front that's installed, because otherwise there is a community church right in front, and it will be, people will park there all the time. And of course, I have a vehicular access gate there, and I won't be able to get my RV out, and then I won't be able to go camping, and my wife will be really upset, so. Apart from that, in conclusion, I'd just like to say I'm in full support of this application and the applicants for being very courteous and forthright in taking our comments, and in closing, I'd like to actually say thank you to Mayor Stewart and many of you counselors who express a lot of concern to us as residents. I know many of you have met face-to-face, phone calls, emails, and we'd just like to say we really appreciate how you also engaged in this, in this effort, and I'd like to say thank you very much. So that's it.
Okay. Just showing you a landscape drawing, and I'll ask you a question about it in a moment. Okay, but I did, I'll say this to the applicants. The last time this came before us, I was the one who was quoted as saying, "This is how not to get," or "This is how to get an application rejected." Not consulting with your residents. This time, to have the residents come up and support your application, having worked with you, I think is really, really important. Now, to Joe, you can see that the garage aprons are, that's what you intended?
Yes, absolutely.
You'd seen this drawing before, or not?
Not to this detail, but I have seen a form of it in draft, and, yeah, I am not opposed to this at all. I think even the pairing of the garages is a great way of providing some additional space beside the garage on each of the lots to accommodate, you know, another vehicle, maybe, you know, boat or whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
And of course, the turnaround needs to have some no parking designation.
Yes.
It's right behind a church, so that looks like good spots if you...
Well, they park there right now, there's like a gravel lot or space on one lot, and they park there all the time, so, and the residents have to come out and chase them away, so, they don't know.
Okay. Counselor Hodge.
So, just on the parking, I'm looking at lots B and C. It looks like there is, in fact, parking on the apron. That was, as soon as the resident mentioned that, I immediately went to this drawing, so this is a revised drawing, so there is going to be parking. So often we see, you know, half a parking, so this is a full car length. It looks like you could almost put two on the apron, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I just showed Joe that drawing, so that's the one, that's when he was commenting on.
So I was just following up on his complaint or concern.
I think it's interesting in that many people, I think, value parking even more so than lawns these days, large yards. These yards are actually quite large, you know, in Coquitlam, and there's a lot of value, I think, in providing some parking.
So my question is, I guess Lot A, because of the turnaround, is not going to have as much parking, it's not going to have the pad for parking then, so there won't be as much parking for Lot A.
Yes, through your counsel, Hodge, there is space for the three off-site that are required, and a garage and the parking pad, but also on Haversley, there's room for approximately five on-street spaces there as well.
Which is more than now, because currently there would be driveways now with no driveways at the front. We pick up some makes for the front then. Great, okay, thank you.
And Lot A is going to probably park in the corner of that anyway, yeah. Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? That went better than last time. I declare this item and the public hearing closed. Soon as we get the wiring...